All right, welcome, welcome. I will let everyone get admitted into the room here. I'm seeing some folks joining us. Thank you so much for being here. And it is not quite seven, so I'll give folks one more minute to hop in the room. And then we will get going because we have some great questions for our candidates to answer this evening. Thank you, thank you all so much. Welcome to the School Board School Cincinnati Public Candidate Forum. Thank you again. All right. I am Andrea Greenery. I have the honor and pleasure of being the Managing Director of Cincinnati for School Board School. And if any of you are new to School Board School, we give everyone who cares about education the knowledge and network they need to drive change for all students. And that's why we're here tonight. We're going to give you all the knowledge about the candidates on the ballot this November. Before we get started, I just have a couple of short announcements. We do have a candidate research kit that School Board School has created along with our partners at Red Wine &amp; Blue, Honesty for Ohio Education, and the Columbus Education Justice Coalition. There are some tools in there to take notes and research your candidates. We'd love for you to check that out. And there is still time to check your voter registration, register to vote, be sure you're updated if you've moved or anything like that. And you still have another week to request an absentee, you have more than that to request an absentee ballot, excuse me. But you can go ahead and do that also. I chatted in the link for the Hamilton County Board of Elections. So be sure to have all of that squared away heading into election season. I am going to stop talking now so we can hear from our candidates. I'm going to turn things over to our moderator. Melinda McReynolds used to be a news reporter. She is also a former teacher and administrator. She is currently an instructional coach at the Hamilton County Educational Service Center. And most importantly, she was in Cohort Three of the School Board School learning program. So with that, I'm turning it over to Melinda.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Good evening, everyone. We are so elated that you are here with us this evening. And I wanted to share a little tidbit that research shows that oftentimes voters may not even be aware of an upcoming school board race, or who's running for that matter. And that's where School Board School comes in. Tonight's forum is to keep you in the know, to be certain that you can make informed decisions. So without any further ado, we'd also like to keep you informed to let you know that voters will be able to vote up for up to four candidates in November. And I'm eager to hear from all of the candidates, as I know that you are as well, on a range of topics. So we're going to go ahead and begin to introduce them. There are five candidates, and we are truly grateful to each of them for being here this evening. And in alphabetical order, I will introduce you to them. Carrie Armbruster, Brandon Craig, Jim Crossit, Marcia Futal, and Kareem Moffett. For tonight's forum, we're going to have a set of questions. And each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer every question because we want to respect everyone's time. I will politely ask each of you to stop when your time has finished. The order that the candidates respond will vary for each question. You all will see the order on the screen along with the question, and it will be in the chat as well. So now that those housekeeping notes are finished, let's begin. We're going to begin with each of you sharing what your understanding is of the role of a school board member. And then we'd like for you to talk to us about how your background and your experience help you be effective in this role. Once again, remember, you have a minute and a half to answer. Kareem, we'll begin with you.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So I am Dr. Kareem Moffett, and I'm currently serving this year as the President of the Cincinnati Public School Board. This is the fourth year of my first term. The role of a school board member is to, actually, we have three employees. So it's to provide governance to the district, and that's through policy. But we also have three employees, the Superintendent, the Internal Auditor, and the Treasurer, all report to the Board. So we hire and fire. We also provide policy that governs the entire district, which encompasses 91 square miles, a little over 35,000 students, and 66 buildings. Another part of our responsibility, a major part, is that we approve the district-wide curriculum. And we are charged with being fiscally responsible to provide the funding to ensure high-quality education. That is our role to ensure that we are providing a balanced budget and that we also are bringing in enough revenue to cover all of our expenses, including our staff and our students. My background, I have garnered, I've been there for four years, and I've been on policy, I've been on budget. I've also worked with student achievement. And most importantly, made some relationships with our legislators at the state and also some legislators across the nation, some other school board members. And so I'm very in tune.
Time is up, then finish that very last thought, if you would, please.
I'm just very in tune with what's going on with the district around education in the state level and nationally.
Thank you so much for sharing, Kareem. Next up is Marcia.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, School Board School, for hosting. So in addition to what's already been shared, the role of the school board member is to provide governance as well as being a coach to the employees that we have. I believe that being a coach to the Superintendent to make sure that we're working collaboratively together to meet the academic goals of the district. I believe that the academic outcomes of our students is priority one. And as a school board, we are responsible for educating the children in our district. So in addition to the fiscal responsibilities, the main goal here is to educate our children. My background and experience does lend itself well to be a board member. I have 20 years in corporate, I have 20 years with nonprofits, and as 20 years as a business owner as well. And so all of those require a level of leadership that understands when to, when to, to coach and when to direct. And so that's one of the attributes of a good board member is to know how, when, and how to do those things to allow the Superintendent and the Treasurer to do their jobs, but provide the direction that they need to meet the goals of the, of the district. My involvement with the school board for over 30 years, I've served on many different committees.
And I know that that minute and a half comes up quickly.
Yes, it does.
Thank you, Marcia, for sharing. We'll now move on to Jim Crossit.
Yes, my name is Jim Crossit, and I am, was appointed to the school board about a year ago. Our responsibilities is to hire and fire direct with the Treasurer, Superintendent, and the Internal Audit. And also to set all the policies and also to raise money for, for the district through levies. And the real estate taxes is our primary vehicle, and we get money also from the state. My background is in accounting and finance. I served on the Audit Committee for 20 years before I got on the school board. So I have a deep background in accounting and finance and a deep knowledge of our audits. We've had clean audit opinions for the last 20 years. And I'm hoping that my wheelhouse, my skillset, can help us with budget. We have tremendous budgetary pressure. Our money from the state is flat, and we do have a renewal levy coming up this November. But it's, again, it's flat money. So with inflation and increasing costs, we're going to have to work really hard to find out how to do more with less. And this is something, a challenge that I certainly want to take on. Also, I feel I have a really good relationship with our Superintendent in terms of coaching and asking her and answering her questions. And I think that's a very important role that I play with my many years of experience in business.
Jim, thank you very much for your response. We'll now move on to Brandon Craig.
All right. So thank you again for hosting today and for allowing us to come and talk to folks. My name is Brandon Craig. I am currently a board member. The role of a board member is primarily focused around governance. It is the role of governance to make sure we build policies that make a difference in our district, that we are listening to those folks within our district and those folks in our community as we build those policies. We also serve the role of making sure that we hold accountable our Superintendent, our Treasurer, and our Chief Auditor, as Dr. Moffett mentioned earlier. I think the other thing that we also must do as a board, and in our role as a board, is to ensure that we are preparing folks for success. Whether it's the students in our district, whether it's the staff in our district, the teachers in our district, we have a role and responsibility to ensure that they are successful as well as the district is successful. Coming into this role four years ago, I came in with a civil rights background. I believe education is the number one civil right that we must adhere to and must promote. So I come in with a lens that's paying attention to the need in our district for equity throughout the district and equity in programming. I think the biggest thing, though, that I bring to this district is I bring a sense of systems make things work. And I'm willing to work with anyone to ensure that our students are successful. So that's why I have a great relationship with the Superintendent, I have a great relationship with the Treasurer, and with the Chief Internal Auditor.
Brandon, thank you very much for your response. And last with the first question, but certainly not least, Carrie Armbruster.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for hosting. I don't want to repeat anything anyone else has said. I think they've all done a great job. The only thing I will add as part of the role of school board, I think, is setting the priorities and the vision for the district that the Superintendent is then charged with executing so that the district can thrive, as Marcia was saying, so that we do have the best outcomes for our students possible. And for me, that's a large part of why I am running. I have a background in a lot of that strategy and vision work. My time in my corporate world was spent at Kroger, and a bulk of that was developing and implementing the program Zero Hunger, Zero Waste for the company. So I was technically in charge of none of the operations of the company, but influenced all of the operations of the company to make sure that we were able to achieve massive change and great outcomes in food waste and reduction of hunger across the entire country. So it's something I'm really passionate about is using strategy and vision to really engage the public, engage a workforce, and build communities and partnerships to help create massive change. So that's something I'm hoping to bring in my skillset to add to the already tremendous work that's being done at the district.
Thank you very much. And thanks to each and every one of you for your thoughtful responses to our very first question. So for those in the audience who might be looking for more information about the role of a school board member versus the role of school administration in a district, School Board School has a wonderful resource on its website. I believe it's added in the chat. And since you all are here tonight, I am sure you recognize that understanding this particular role is an important consideration as you think about who you will vote for in November. So now we're going to move on to question two. Question two states, by definition, school board members are supposed to be representatives of the community or the voice of constituents. But it looks like we may have some adjustments that are here because this question looks very, I'm sorry, very similar to this. I'm going to reread again, but I'm going to read what we have posted here. How do you believe the school board should engage with the community to make sure the decisions the board makes are representative of those most impacted by a decision? Part two of that, how will you ensure that the engagement is done equitably? Our first person that's going to begin is Jim Crossit.
Yeah, thank you very much. A very important question. Computing engagement is critical. And I think that the way that we can do that, and the way that we do do that, is we have LSDMCs, which are community members in each school. We have open forums in every board meeting for people to come and talk. And when, also, when we have critical decisions, we usually are pretty good about reaching out specifically to people that are going to be affected with that. I think, you know, we've got, we had a pretty big decision that we made last year, which in regards to setting up the corridor system and middle schools. And we had had, prior to that, we'd had a lot of community engagement, a lot of feedback from people. So I, I think we're, we generally are very intentional about that. Equity, how, how is engagement done equitably? Equity is so important in our public schools, and it's something that we are working hard to achieve. I think you just have to be persistent in reaching out to the public. I also think that it's important to build, for us to build as many relationships as we can from leadership communities within the, within the district too, the business community, Chamber of Commerce, any, you know, the universities, anybody that is interested in helping us. So that's another place where, when we get that kind of feedback that can help us with equity, getting equity to all of our different schools and all of the students that really deserve it. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for your response. We'll now move on to Carrie Armbruster.
Yeah, this one's really important to me as well. I'm actually a parent in the district. I have three students enrolled in a CPS school. And it's something that I have thought a lot about because engagement is something I think the district can and should do more equitably and more often. So I know the district has done a lot of really great work in this area, but I don't know that it's always getting to the community in the way it should be. So making sure we are checking in to see that it's connecting is really, really important because I have been a very active parent, and it takes a lot of time and energy to know what's happening, and I'm still missing it half the time. So we need to do more proactive work to, to find people where they are and get out and talk to people in ways that work for them and not make them always come to us. And talk to students. I know a lot of our board members are out there talking to students in our schools. But let's find other ways to do it too, so that they can provide feedback on an ongoing basis that doesn't always require the, the school visits that sometimes can be more complicated. So what are we doing when you're talking about impacting groups of people? The students are often really highly impacted, along with caregivers and, and community. So there's so much work to be done here, and I'm really excited about it.
Thank you, Carrie. I was right on time. Brandon Craig, you're up next.
All righty. So I think this is a very important question because I think the role of a school board member is to represent the community for which you are there to serve. And I think this is one of the reasons why I took very serious when we were making changes to the district over the last few years, to ensure that we heard the voices of those folks who were most directly infected by those decisions. That's why I pushed for, when we were making the decision to move students out of Riverview East, that we spoke to the parents of Riverview East, that we talked to those kids who were there to ensure that they knew where they were going, that they had a place to go to. That when we move kids to Mount Washington and other district schools, that we were really ensuring they were getting a good quality education while they're there. It's why I fought when we were having the changes to add middle schools to our district to make sure that we, again, make sure parents got a chance to talk to those principals, to see those schools that their kids were going to be going to, and to understand what was changing. We have to do a lot stronger level of engagement to ensure that folks understand, not just what the move is, but how that move will affect them long-term, how that will change what their students' opportunities are. I think the other part to think about when we think about equitable engagement is ensuring that we are putting opportunities in front of those parents so they know the programming at our schools, so they know what those resources are at our schools, and that they're able to make real decisions for their students. That's equitable engagement.
Thank you, Brandon. We'll now move on to Marcia Futal.
So when it comes to the role of the board for community engagement, as elected officials, we are accountable to the board. Can you hear me? Because my thing says I'm not unmuted. Okay, I'm sorry. So we are accountable to the community as elected officials to have our pulse on the community in terms of their concerns. However, the Superintendent is the CEO of the district, and it's the Superintendent's responsibility to make sure that engagement happens so that whatever initiatives, plans, et cetera, that are rolled out throughout the district, there is a robust engagement plan for communicating those things. We did a great job of that 20 years ago when we did the Facilities Masters Plan. Every school community was engaged and had input into those plans, and they had input on, into what they wanted for their schools. And so that's when it works. That's when the board was holding Superintendent accountable, and the board was giving feedback on what they heard. These last set of changes that occurred over, for this school year, the engagement was not as robust, and therefore there were issues that could have been addressed had the, had the engagement been more targeted towards those parents and students that would be impacted through the changes. So we have a lot of work to do when it comes to engaging the community and the stakeholders.
Thank you very much, Marcia. And now we'll move on to Kareem Moffett.
Okay, thank you for that question. I think that, I will say, I, I am a big fan of engagement. And I have tried to, through my term, engage as much as possible. I think we can absolutely do better. The type of engagement that I am looking for, we've not done. We, when we can do more of some of the things that we are doing. To answer the question succinctly without trying to repeat, that is our role, is to connect the community to the district. We are voted on, elected officials. And so that is our responsibility to represent the values of the, of the community and work collaboratively, all seven of us. All seven of us represent a different demographic of the community. You cannot get anything passed or accomplished as one board member. So it really behooves us to work collaboratively. I've learned that the hard way over the past four years. I can come in with all kinds of goals and aspirations, but I need to work with my colleagues to get those things done. And it's really valuable because each of us represents, not only represents a different section of the community, but we also represent different learning styles, true diversity, different ways of doing things. So I think we can absolutely do better. We have to give the community information, increase awareness on the issues that are coming down from the state that directly impact them and what, what our stance is. And that's what we, that is our responsibility. I try to be everywhere, and that's exactly what I'm going to continue to do.
Thank you for sharing, Kareem. We'll now move on to the next question. As you all know, Cincinnati Public School has passed both an equity policy and an anti-racism policy. The board has also passed resolutions protecting students regardless of immigration status and supporting the district's LGBTQ plus students. And district staff and board members regularly march in the pride parade. These and other policies, resolutions, and actions by the district make clear CPS's stance on the role of diversity and inclusion in our education system. There have been numerous bills and resolutions passed at the State House that challenged many of the programs and offerings that CPS values. First, tell us what you believe the role of the school board is in equity and inclusion work. And secondly, tell us how you believe the district should respond when state bills pass that are in conflict with CPS policies or practices. This time, Brandon Craig will start us off.
Well, thank you for this question also. And I want to start by saying, every child in our CPS school district, and matter of fact, these days, every child anywhere near our CPS school district is welcomed in CPS. We make sure that, we fight for that, and that is something we will always have pride in. And that's the role of the board. The board sets policies and sets actions, as you referenced, to make sure that all of our students feel welcomed, that all of our students feel supported. They all feel valued when they come in our district, and that none are left behind when it comes to educational opportunities. Now, we know our state's going to challenge that every single day they can. And we're going to keep getting legislation that's going to push to make it more difficult for our students, and especially these days, our LGBTQ students. But more importantly, our Black students, our Hispanic students, our multilingual learning students, our biracial students, every, every single student in our district is facing challenges from the state these days. And we have to continue to ensure that they are protected. That's why we have fought over the years to ensure that we did not sign on to the letter, the Dear Colleague Letter from the federal government, that we have challenged things that would come through that would require us to do more to check, to put our students in jeopardy, and that's why we refuse to break our own policies or break our own rules when it came to having ICE come through our schools. We know that every student needs to feel valued and supported. And the only way you do that is you challenge those who attempt to come at them and take that away.
Brandon, thank you for sharing. We'll move on to Carrie.
Yeah, I would just say, full stop, the second the district stops having diversity, equity, and inclusion as a core principle is the, the second we fail our students, like, hands down. We cannot, because we then have isolated and made our students feel unwelcome in our district. And that is completely unacceptable for Cincinnati Public Schools to do. So I totally agree with Brandon. Every single student is welcome within our schools. Not just that they are welcome, that they need to feel welcome and safe in our schools. So first and foremost, that, that's what I believe is the role of Cincinnati Public Schools because it's a right for every single student to have an education in our schools. And I believe that that includes a safe, welcome environment. And then as far as responding to state and federal conflicts on that, I mean, I think that's going to have to happen as it comes. I know that I will do everything in my power to uphold the district's policies in a legal way. But those challenges are going to keep coming, and I will continue to, to fight for inclusion in our schools.
Thank you for sharing. Kareem, please share your thoughts.
So we, the, the role of Cincinnati Public Schools has a, has been built on diversity. We value diversity in its, in all of its form, whether that be race, gender, sex. Those are the obvious ones, but also diversity of thought, diversity of learning style. And all of that is what we are built on. This board, and I'm so glad, and I don't want to repeat everything that was already said by my colleague, but this board stood fast against the challenge from the state and the federal government to challenge that, some of the core values that we believe in. And we each, all seven of us, said no. We would not sign that, and we will stand steadfast against anything that is intended to ask us to do so. I believe we, we have always followed the law. We will continue to follow the law. And if the law changes, that's where engagement comes in. We need to rally the troops. We need to tell parents, hey, this is what they're asking us to do. To, in order to offset this and respond to state bills that are coming down the pipe that are in, in committees right now, we need to be working with our state legislators. We need to have connectivity, and we do. We need to let them know what, how we're impacted by the things that are being presented and how detrimental they will be, and then let the community know how detrimental these things are. And that is exactly what we're doing right now. There are bills that don't make it out of committee because we rally the troops. We, we are in constant contact. We go up regularly.
Thank you very much, Kareem. We now move on to Marcia.
So first of all, I'd like to applaud the board members that have come years before me that have instituted some wonderful policies that, that are in place right now that create a safe learning environment for all of our children. And I will continue to support that. It includes the equity policy, the anti-racism policy, and other policies that make our environment safe for our kids. And we must uphold those things. But what I'd like to see when we talk about equity and our responsibility is that it needs to be reflected in our academic outcomes of all of our students. So as we look at their, their successes in the classroom and how they're being graduated, we should see equitable outcomes for all of our kids. And I think that's when we really start to see our work pay off. So while we have the policies, we need to hold our, our administration and our, our classroom leaders and our building leaders accountable for making sure that that equity is reflected in the classrooms. And then finally, I wholeheartedly agree with Dr. Moffett when she talks about advocacy at the state level. We need to inform our community that we have local control right now, and we need to band together to And we need to band together to keep our local control of our school district and to to stay on guard against these harmful bills that are coming down the pipe that would disrupt that.
Thank you for sharing, Marcia. And last but not least, Jim Crossit, you can answer that question.
Yeah, thank you. I think by by definition, we are inclusive. Any student who lives in our district can be educated in our schools. We we are inclusive automatically. And I I I'm proud of that, and I'm glad that we will continue that. I think in terms of equity, just to add to some of what's already been said, but also we approve the budget. And I think there in that budget approval, we we I I like to think that we're very careful in trying to allocate resources where they where they can be most equitable. We're not perfect at it, but I do think that we pay attention to that. I also, I think we got to just with Columbus, Ohio, we just got to be very vigorous and very much on time. Whoops, very vigorous and very much on aggressive in paying attention to what bills are coming and getting the word out to our community and to our representatives to try to help us. Right now, the the atmosphere in Columbus is very aggressive, and we're going to have to be just as aggressive as we fight for what we need and and the rights of our students and the resources that we need to help our schools be as best as they can. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Moving on to our next question. I heard previously equitable academic outcomes and resources are a necessity. However, our next question states, we know that the time our students spend in school, as you all alluded to, is critical to their academic success. But I think we can also agree that a student's well being outside of school directly impacts their ability to succeed in the classroom. Everything from access to stable housing, to their parents having a living wage, to their safety on the on the commute to school and so much more directly affects student outcomes. And school districts alone, we can't solve all of these problems. So I ask of you as a school board member, how have you or how would you work with other individuals in collaborating or other entities to address these major issues impacting our children? Carrie, you're going to kick us off this time.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is an incredibly important issue. I agree, students can't focus on learning and get the best out of themselves if they're worried about what's going to happen to them when they get home or if they're hungry or if they couldn't sleep last night because they didn't have heat. All these things impact outcomes. And in a urban district like we have, a district with thirty five thousand students in it, we have a tremendous amount of this happening. And I think one amazing example of this happening today is Project Connect, which our current board is partnering with many, many agencies to have happen. It's a great example of ways to partner with others. I personally will continue to expand on this. I think finding outside resources is incredibly important. I think the work of community resource coordinators in our schools is important in this area because they can help to identify what those needs are on a very micro level, on school building level, so that we can identify students in need and what those needs look like and get them the services that they require. And then looking outside of just community partners, looking at government partners. So partnering with the county and with the city to get the resources we need as well. Is it going to be, it's happening, but it can always be improved upon and and expanded.
Thank you, Carrie. Kareem?
So I I'm sorry, it's just unmuted. So I believe that the primary role of the district is to provide high quality education. Unfortunately, we have to deal with some of the things that impact how we deliver those services to our students. And that is inclusive of housing, that's inclusive of food insecurities, safety, because our students come to us with those things. So we have to continue partnerships. For the past two years, we've been working in partnership with the city. This Healthy Neighborhoods joint meetings we have with the city and city council, the city council and the school district. We meet every quarter. We talk about school issues and how the city can help us. And we inform the city on what their what some of our students are impacted by. We are talking about including in discussions with including the commissioners because it is not just simply a city issue. It is a county issue. We span ninety one square miles, and so we want to include the county in this as well, and they are very open to that. I've worked with unions and will continue to work with my colleagues around increasing apprenticeship opportunities for our students. We know and we are working this year, starting this year, to provide more career tech and workforce opportunities. We have unions that are are able to service our students. And then lastly, we're working with those social service agencies that are already doing some of this work and helping them connect to our district.
Thank you, Kareem. We'll now move on to Marcia.
I totally agree that these these problems that you have mentioned, housing, food insecurity, trauma, gun violence, all kinds of issues that our children face are horrendous. And they still are expected to come to school and to learn. So I think there's a great opportunity for us to partner, not only with the current agencies that we have those relationships with, but with the city. These children belong to the city of Cincinnati and every other municipality that's represented in our district. So yes, there have been meetings. Those meetings have been happening for years and years and years, but we need for those meetings to yield results. There needs to be some some intentional work that comes out of the discussion, a pilot program or something that where you can have measurable goals to address some of these issues. And there's there's opportunities for that all around. So I will also pledge my work towards this because I feel strongly that the city has to partner with the with the school district on those things. So and then the other thing I'll say real quickly is despite the challenges, we still have to set a high expectation for our children to learn. I grew up on the west side of Chicago, experienced some of these same things. And we were still expected to learn when we got to school, and school was a safe haven for us. So we have to do that as well.
Thank you for sharing, Marcia. We'll now move on to Jim.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, that definitely the problem is bigger than the schools. We have a majority of students who are in economically challenged families. And they many, many of these students suffer different types of trauma from neglect and homelessness and and verbal abuse. So it's it's bigger than this what the schools can handle. And I believe I would work, I am working and will continue to work on what I call collective impact. I'm I'm did connect our superintendent with the chamber. I did connect our superintendent with the new president of the Greater Cincinnati Foundation. Those were connections that I think as a board member were important for me to make. I currently serve on the Business Advisory Council where we're trying to find more and more internships and jobs that pay money for our juniors and seniors. Because these kids need money just to to get through the day. So and collective impact, there's a program Strive that one of the advisors to Strive I've been talking with. But Strive is going to come back into place. And it's going to, I think they've targeted two schools, but one of the schools is a CPS school, Roll Hill. It's going to be an experiment for Strive coming back into Cincinnati. But collective impact is where lots of forces come together to make a difference. The business community, the hospitals, the universities, the city. And it's we have a massive problem of economic challenge with many families. And it's just want to bring out all the resources to bear we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Brandon?
So this issue is one that touches touches me greatly because when I came to the board, one of the things I struggled with is the fact that we had kids traveling so far to school that we were moving kids so far to get them because of their housing instability, because they were not necessarily guaranteed to be in the same space. We had a lot of turnover in buildings. And what that leads to is students not coming. What that leads to is students not getting that exposure to the information in their classroom. When a student comes in hungry, they cannot focus. When a student comes in once every three days, they will not learn. What we know is that building up on the housing instability, the food insecurity and and safety issues is a struggle in our urban community. And especially in urban community the size of Cincinnati Public School District, where we travel all the way from Sailor Park to Mount Washington. And and so what we have to do and what I've fought to do is ensure that as we make decisions in the district, that we're thinking about how those things work with those kids who need this most. The multilingual learners who are going to have a difficulty in finding a safe way back home after school. How do we find resources to ensure that our parents and families are part of that education process, whether that's after school education or in school education? What are the steps that we can do to really make sure that we're addressing those issues as much as we can through our social workers and our community resources, but also not reinventing the wheel?
Thank you all for your excellent thoughts. We we focused on the students, also the superintendent, governance. Now the question is about you all. If you're elected, how will you know if you are being an effective board member individually and as a whole body? And if you believe that you are not being effective, then how will you collaborate with your fellow board members to change course? Marcia, you'll go first.
Thank you. Well, as board members, we are all tasked with being leaders and and leadership is merely just influence. And so I would know if I were effective if I am in discussions and sharing ideas and and listening to ideas from my fellow board members. And I am contributing to a goal that's going to be effective and productive. And so if we're doing those things, if I'm behaving that way, then I would feel that I was being affected. I don't have to have the last say, I don't have to have the the only answer. But I think one of the strengths I do bring to the table is the ability to listen, to synthesize the answers and the things I'm hearing and help bring the group to a common conclusion. And so if I'm not being effective, then I would expect my fellow board members to pull me to the side and tell me and and share with me the behaviors that I need to examine in order to course correct. And I think we owe that to each other so that we're doing our best, we're bringing our best selves to the table in order to work together, that we're bringing our best selves together on behalf of our children. So I would hope to get that feedback and I would receive that feedback. And I would hope that my fellow board members would receive that feedback as well.
Thank you for sharing. Jim?
Yeah, thank you. The I'm I'm feel very blessed to be on the board and and I really like all the board members that that I work with. And and what I think one of the benefits of of why that has happened is everybody's heart is in the right place. Everybody wants to do the best we can to have the best student outcomes we can get. So I'm I'm I I try to have good relationship with everybody as best I can. I think if you've observed me in a lot of board meetings, I I tend not to speak so much. I'm a very good listener, and I try to be very efficient in what I have to say and concise. And it's mostly because I want to listen and hear what my other board members have to say. And I think that's an important part of collaboration. I I like to think that all of us have a chance to participate in our board meetings and and share our ideas. I'm open to collaboration on anything, anytime. And just it's an honor to serve. And I think we've got some really good people on our board now. And and it's just just a lot of good diverse brain power to help come to the best decisions we can regarding policy, the budget, and helping the superintendent and the treasurer. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Jim. Brandon?
So I think this is a good question for for a unique reason. I I think when you go onto a board, you're not always going to agree. You're not always going to feel the opinions of your other board members are driving towards the right direction that you think the district should move into. And that can be very challenging as an individual because for that individual, you want to see a goal achieved. And I think that's the point of being on a board is that we are not seven people who all get to pick where we go. We are seven people who have to work together to get the district to move to where it needs to go. And that's what I really think shows you're a successful board member, is when you're able to use your skills, your talents and your ability to drive the district in a direction that improves it. I I worked really hard when we were making the changes to the district with regards to putting in middle schools to make sure that we were having good discussions about it so that the public also understood where those challenges might be, where those things we may have questions that need to be answered may happen. That was not moving necessarily in the direction that I was pushing. But I wanted to make sure that my voice was still heard and that we still had people's voices who may have those concerns addressed in the conversation. And I think that's only that's the only way you can work collaboratively with the rest of your board is if you all are willing to hear each other out and willing to have the time and space for those honest conversations. That's what we did, and that's what we continue to do. And that's what we can will continue to do in the future, but that really starts with us being respectful of each other.
Thank you, Brandon. Harry?
Yeah, I think there are a lot of people in my life that will be willing to tell me if I'm not being an effective board member. But I think for me personally, my measure of success will be if I can have a productive, even potentially tense conversations with my colleagues that result in us being able to come back the next day with respect and kindness, right? Because we've built a relationship of trust that we know if we disagree on an issue, we can talk through it, come to whatever the conclusion is and have the same respect for each other the next day. Because I presented myself in a way that maintains that respect that they have for me. Because I do think that's the most effective way to govern, is to be able to communicate in a way and advocate in a way that's not going to make people lose respect for you. And I think as far as the board as a whole, I think if we see progress in the district on outcomes, on staff and culture improvement, on on all these different metrics that we're looking at each and every year frequently. That's how we'll know if we're being effective. Because if if we're not seeing movement on those issues, then clearly we we need to rethink what we're doing. But yeah, I I think maintaining professional things. And and like I said, many people in my life will tell me if I'm not.
Thank you for sharing, Carrie. Kareem?
So when I first got on the board, I was super eager, and I thought I knew exactly what I was doing. And it became very clear that how there was a difference between application and theory. And so in reality, I have grown as a board member because I have learned not only what my role is, but how I fit within the the wheel of the seven. I I've come with my, I know what my why is, I want to impact change, I want to impact education in Cincinnati. But it's also about you reading the bylaws, knowing what the state laws are and and the state rules and regulations are around what the role of what the responsibility and the role of a board member is. I think that I I've said this, that we are like seven brothers and sisters and mom and dad is the district. And we want the best for mom and dad in our own way, but we may come at that in different ways. I have learned to grow and be more respectful of my colleagues and value the diversity and the voices that they bring to the table and provide space for that. And I think we've gotten a really great sync. I I kind of know where some of my colleagues are going to come from. They're going to bring up something that I don't have to bring up because they're going to bring up. You learn those things as you are open to growing. And that's what I've been able to do is to grow. It's really about understanding your why and then learning, being able to remain true to you while also educating the community about what the role of a board member is too.
Thank you, Kareem. This hour has been flying by, and we are down to our last two questions. So here's the question. In your role as a school board member, how will you hold the superintendent accountable for increasing academic outcomes across the district? And then the second part of that is, how will you let the public know about progress toward the district's academic goals? Carrie, you're going to start us off.
Oh, this is great because I actually just watched one of the school board schools previous webinar trainings. And it was talking about the role of school board, but they specifically talked about the power of the evaluation for superintendents. So this is something I am learning as I go. As Kareem said, I I'll be new, so I need to to learn more about the role. So I think holding this superintendent accountable is really important. And I think that starts with making sure So, um, I think holding the superintendent accountable is really important and I think that starts with making sure um, the superintendent knows what her metrics are that she will, or they, it might not always be a woman. They will be judged on, um, and then maintaining that communication as an open two-way communication, right? So that they are not blindsided by having targets that they're going to be graded on that they didn't know about or that the, the move, the target has changed. And so if they know from the outset what they're striving toward, they can continue to do that. And then we can hold them accountable. Cause it's hard to hold someone accountable for something they, they didn't know from the beginning. Um, and definitely those are public conversations and I think it's important and fair to the superintendent that the public is aware of the targets that were set for that person by the board, by their, you know, by their bosses. So that the, the public doesn't have a misrepresentation of what the superintendent was supposed to be doing. And, um, then they can see the results at the end of the time, just the same way as the board.
Carrie, thank you for sharing. We're gonna move on to Brandon.
So I think the, again, one of the crucial roles of any board member and, and of the board in itself is to hold the superintendent accountable. And, and I think the way you do that best is the way we've been striving to do it more recently, which is one, create a system for which you will actually hold him accountable. So we made a policy. We've now created a metric system, uh, Mr. Crossit and Mr. Lindy worked hard with that, with the superintendent to build a system for which we can then each year have the same way of holding the superintendent accountable. I think you also have to look at what does the board, speaking with the community and getting the community's feedback, set are the goals for that year? And that goals for the district going forward, what are your strategic goals? So you're not just judging superintendent on whether or not you like the one result or not, but whether or not that result heads towards the path you're looking at. I think the third thing though, that we have to also do is measure the success of the treasurer and the chief internal auditor. Because there are also two people who report to us. And that it, they're, they don't work opposite of each other. They don't work in isolation from each other. The treasurer can only achieve a balanced budget when the superintendent gives them information that allows them to be able to calculate the doc, the, the numbers and be able to put together those figures. The board has to make sure that relationship is collaborative as well. If we do all of that, if we set our strategic goals, we'll achieve those goals if each part works together and doesn't work apart from each other.
Thank you very much. And it sounds like Brandon, moving on to Kareem, it sounds like a close-knit family making those decisions. Kareem?
I don't know if it's close, but we definitely are like family for sure. So, um, I think that, um, we, to, to not repeat what, uh, my colleague said, we do have a policy that evaluates the superintendent yearly and then on a midterm basis. Those include the academic goals that we've set forth that they are supposed to be maintaining. And so we regularly monitor progress, uh, towards those goals. Um, but it's also in thinking in terms of the superintendent has seven bosses. The superintendent has seven people with completely different personalities, completely, completely different agendas. And we all have come together to make those small goals. But each of us has things that we wanna work on individually. And it's about listening to the, the, the values of the board member that is representing the community. And then also seeing if there are ways without micromanaging, because that's not our role to run the district. If those things can, um, fit within those goals and then be, have her be, him or her be held accountable. But I also think that it's about, um, asking the community's questions in public so that they know that there is value of what they are, uh, what they're asking that board member to do. So oftentimes you'll see board members ask questions during inquiries and updates around things that may or may not have been topics during the agenda, but that community wants to know. So the community's voice should be represented at every single board meeting in some way. And it usually falls around academic goals, but it could also fall around, um, other things as well.
Thank you, Kareem. Jim?
Yes, thank you. I, I, I was, had the privilege of being on the policy committee when we set the policy for the, how to evaluate the superintendent. And I, we established that sixty percent of the performance review would be based on student outcomes in the report card. And that was very significant to have that to be the majority of the performance review. The, the other major portion of the performance review is the, uh, looking at the state standards that a superintendent should be, um, adhering to. Also, I, I think the policy in a way is, is, uh, fairly, um, numeric and very systematic. So, uh, it's, it's pretty clear, there's not too much in the performance review that's, um, subjective. And I think that's important so that we can get a good, clear view of how well the superintendent is doing. Um, we also changed the timing of when the performance review was done, so it would be more in sync with the school year and more in sync with the report card. So that also is really an, an important step that we took. Um, so tho- those are, I, I, the other thing is to make it all public. We, we will make this all public and, and then the, with, with explanations and it's important. I, I think the last thing that is important is that during the school year, we need to check in. I think we can do a better job of checking in during the year on progress. And looking for where, where things aren't quite right because the performance review of the superintendent reflects on us, on the board. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jim. Marcia?
So this topic is very dear and dear to my heart about holding the superintendent accountable. But first of all, we have to hold ourselves accountable as a board to not have small goals, but bold goals and stretch goals, not unrealistic goals, but some bold goals because our district has been stuck for a very long time and we have to move the needle much quicker than what we're moving it for, for the sake of our children and for the sake of their futures. So our, our academic outcome goals have to be good stretch goals. That's number one. Number two, we have to have, we have to hold our superintendent accountable for making data-driven decisions as he or she is planning to, uh, address those goals and to, uh, drive, uh, those goals to results. The third thing is that as a board, we have to be able to support the superintendent in doing that. I would expect that the superintendent would bring back their vision, their plan. Cause they are the CEO of the district. They bring back the plan, we review the plan, we talk about how we can help implement the plan. So that we move our academic outcomes for our kids a lot faster than what it's been doing. As far as the public is concerned, I would hope that we would have a report, doesn't have to be real long, but a report every single board meeting on how well we're doing with our academic outcomes. That's what I would expect and that's how I would hold the superintendent accountable.
Thank you, Marcia. And then lastly, we're running tight on time, but we have to end this session, this forum on a positive note. You've got thirty seconds each one of you. Tell us what you love most about Cincinnati Public Schools. We're gonna begin with Marcia.
I love Cincinnati Public Schools because I think our children are just brilliant. I think we have some of the best teachers in the world in our buildings. I think we have some of the best parents in the, in the world in our district. And I look forward to seeing us all work together so that our children have a bright future. It's gonna be hard work, but together we can get it done. So I'm just excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, thank you very much. I am very excited. I, I've, in my first year, I got to visit about thirty-five of the sixty-six buildings and that's really fun. It's really exciting to go to a school, tour the school, see the kids, see the principal, see the teachers interact. I mean, that's, that's been a lot of fun. Um, but the other thing that I really like is that I think that as a board, we have an opportunity to be really strategic for the long term and, and do it in a way that we're urgent, but also patient. And that excites me too, that we have an opportunity to really make a bold move. As Marcia says, it's time. We gotta do something massive and we gotta do something bold because we're up against some massive challenges. So, thank you.
You for sharing. Carrie?
Yeah, I think I love CPS or I know I love CPS because it's diverse and full of opportunity and offers so much, um, hope for our students and opportunity for them to, to find themselves. And I think that we have work to do, but it's, it's just going to be uh, work that improves upon something that has a history of success and innovation. And I think our district will continue to grow and become even better.
Thank you for sharing. Kareem?
I love CPS because inside of thirty of sixty-six buildings and thirty-five thousand students is honesty, hope, optimism, their our future, their creative. If I'm having a crazy day with adults, I go into one of these buildings and they, I get the truth. And I also find hope and I also find love. And it pains me and it also motivates me that at the state level, they're trying to take that light away. We've got excellence in our buildings already. I wanna keep working.
Thank you. And last but not least, Brandon?
You know, the thing I, I, I think we've all said it, we all love this, the students bring joy to our lives when we get to go out there and interact with them. But I will tell you, the thing that I love the most about our districts are the teachers who pour their interest in their hearts into our students and the counselors and the social workers. I know if it weren't for Ms. Sontag, Ms. Turpo, Mr. Cheese, and Ms. Brown, making sure that I got through school and, and finished my homework and did it correctly and then checked my work, I wouldn't have made it. And so I know our students need that same love for them too.
Thank you to each and every one of you again for being here this evening. You all really made my job an easy one as a moderator tonight. I can only imagine the energy and the commitment that it takes to run for office. Even though I participated in School Board School, I'm certain that that was only the tip of the iceberg. I truly thank each and every one of you for spending this time here tonight to share about yourself and your vision for Cincinnati Public Schools. I also want to extend a sincere thank you to everyone in the community who was able to join us this evening. Please do share with your friends and neighbors the importance of the upcoming school board election and be sure you and your network have a plan to vote on or before November fourth. Have a great evening. Thank you.